Aloha, everybody. We're convening the Senate Committee on Transportation on our 3:00 PM hearing here via video conference out of the state Capitol. We do have a couple agendas today. So the first one will be going through a handful of bills and taking testimony, and we'll be asking folks to limit their testimony. We'll let you know when that time runs out, just to make sure that everybody can have their voices heard. And then we'll follow up with questions from senators on the committee afterward. And then, secondly, we'll be returning to our decision-making agenda, which is a carryover from our prior hearing a few days ago. So we'll be taking that up at the end of the first agenda. If we are cut off at any point, we will try and reestablish a connection. But if we are unable to, we'll be deferring the remaining portion of the agenda at that point until our next hearing, which is going to be Tuesday, February 8th at 3:00 PM here online via the Capitol. So that being said, why don't we get started on our 3:00 PM agenda? Up first is Senate Bill 3311, which establishes the ground transportation and inter-island transportation working groups. And up first is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the Transportation Committee. I'm Jade Bhuta for DOT. We stand on our submitted written testimony, offering comments. Sustainability has been our focus at DOT during this administration. We recognize the need to factor environment, social, and economic consideration into transportation activities. We recognize the need to take sustainability of the system into account as we plan for the maintenance of our transportation system. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Up next is the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Hello, I'm Chris Junker on behalf of Scott Glenn. I'm going to stand on our written testimony in support and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is DLNR, the Climate, State Climate Commission, in support. After that, the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. Say that three times fast.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tiffany Yajima for the Alliance for Automotive Innovation, also known as the Auto Innovators. We thank you for the opportunity to testify. We support the intent of this measure, but do you have concerns with the 2045 date for ground transportation? We know that there will still be gasoline-powered cars on the road by 2045. We will stand on the rest of our written testimony and do ask that the committee remove the 2045 date for ground transportation and instead go with the goal of achieving zero emissions ground transportation as soon as practically possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Mattson Navigation Company in support, Ulapono Initiative in support, Hawaii Auto Dealers Association. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye. I'm David Rolfe with the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association, the franchise new car dealers. And we are in strong support of the transition to electric vehicles and strong support of the intent of this bill, especially the working group portion of it. We hope that we can contribute to that, especially with all the data we've assembled on that. We do ask too, like the alliance says, that consideration be given to removing the 2045 date because of the impracticability ability of that, and that's a mouthful, of selling 50,000 cars per year, starting in just three years. In other words, to hit a goal like that, we'll probably have about 5,000 electric vehicles sold for the next three years on that year. But to hit a goal like that, it would require a power of magnitude increase. So we'd ask that you consider removing that part of the bill and ask that we could be added to the working groups and join in, rolling up sleeves and helping get this done, because it's an exciting time for the industry. Thanks for submitting this bill.
Thanks very much. And up next, we have Simon Pietri Enterprises with comments. I believe that's all the written testimony we have. Did we miss anybody here? It does not look like it. So with that, are there any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Am I clear?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. Just questions, Chair. The working group, and I hope that Director Jade Bhuta is still around. This designates the working group. And the, of course, the working group will probably be the lead of this group as the director's designate as well. You have the administrator of the State Energy Office on this working group. And then you have the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. So it continues on regarding item four, relevant stakeholders as recommended by the working group. And it talks about what the working group does submitting the reports. I have no problem. I do have, I'd like to recommend that the item four, the stakeholders as recommended, that the working group could include. I think we should at least give some thought into, as recommended or requested by the HADA group as well, to be included into this, the ground transportation working group. And I'd like to add if that could be included in that measure. I question the inter-island transportation working group. Now, what is the inter-island transportation working group I'm going to work on, aside from the first desk of the ground transportation? So what is the inter-island? Can you clarify what the inter-island transportation group is going to do? A bigger pardon?
Is the director still with us?
Yeah.
There you are. Good afternoon. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so what is the inter-island transportation working group?
I think that would be more on the maritime, you know, for, you know, commercial harbors, Vice Chair.
Okay, but if you continue on with the bill as well, they also talk about air, international transpacific transportation. So I assume that that group means the airlines. Is that air transportation, Chair? So your inter-island transportation working group are the maritime?
Sorry, are you talking to me?
Yeah, both of you, yeah. Because you're the introducer, Chris.
Yes. The genesis of this is to get all the stakeholders at the table. So when it comes to inter-islands, the working group, I don't have this right in front of me because I'm looking at the fire sheet. Generally, J. Cover of the inter-island transport, air and sea, yes.
So are you saying that maritime?
That's right.
And so Jade, you understand, you think it's maritime?
Yeah, that's what I, that's my understanding.
Okay, then my question is, may I request that the working group also includes then those with HUGS and inter-island transportation? And I think YB is part of HUGS, right?
Yes.
Okay, because the HUGS groups handle information with regards, but I'd like that identified as part of the working group, if that's okay. I want it into the measure. Okay, then we also look at the Hawaii Clean Transportation Established on page six. That's where we talk about the international transportation, transpacific transportation on line 19 and 20 on page six.
Yeah, I would assume you would need to include the ACH or the airlines.
That's correct, and that's my request. So these major, and then as you, as you work on this study as well, in coming up with other, I guess, those other groups that will be helpful to the committee into consideration, the relevant stakeholders. I would prefer that those major groups I speak about should be part of the major group. And then you all can decide, Jade, that, then you can decide who else you should include.
We'll do, Vice Chair.
Okay, then you talk about on page seven, on on line three, the electric vehicle sales growth, Department of Transportation. Similarly, and I think this is where HADA should be included in the group, if I can request they be included. I, and I think it gives you an idea, because many of these stakeholders already have datas that they work with, Chair. And so having them there, I think people will be a little more confident that this working group can be successful. And I think other than that, it'll be great in SB 3311. Now, there's a section, though, maybe I'll take it back further. Page seven, when I suggested HADA group be included, and I think HECO should be included in this measure as well. I'm sorry, but the utility company and the electric vehicle group or all the HADA members or HADA itself be included on page seven as part of the working group, then I'll be happy. And I think that's a matter of suggestions, so that we understand that the director, whoever it is, working on this group, because I'm sure, I think your report, I don't know, do you have a date for this, Chair? So you don't have a date for submittal for a report to the legislature? Do you need one?
Vice Chair, do we want to ask, I guess, in a form of a question, so we get to the testimony, if we can have the discussion at the end?
Okay.
Come back, come back to the nitty-gritty and all that stuff.
Okay, all right. But anyway, I think we have to consider putting a date to report to the legislature.
So noted.
All right.
Okay. Meanwhile, other questions for the testifiers while we're here? If not, I did want to follow up with, excuse me, the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this right one of these times, if you're still present.
Sorry, Chair, I thought you were done with the questions for the
Oh, no, no, no worries.
There wasn't any, so I thought it was for the committee. Sorry.
Yeah, we'll get back to it, for sure.
Okay.
Thanks again for your testimony. So to be clear, your testimony is just focused on for the, just the 2045 date, just for the ground transportation portion of that. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and then as far as, I think to the Vice Chair's point, serving on a working group and all the rest of that, and collaborating with other stakeholders, that's something you guys are open to?
Absolutely, and thank you so much for asking. We would absolutely like to be a part of the working group and would like to work collaboratively with DOT, the legislature, the energy office, and all other stakeholders.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And then one follow-up, if I can, with State Energy Office, if you're still with us.
Yes.
Hey, good afternoon. So just following up on, on, you know, there's the distinction in the bill. There's the ground transportation side of the whole transportation equation. Then you have also the air and inter-island, international, domestic situation. You know, part of what I think, part of the testimony, and the Vice Chair alluded to this too, a little bit, taking sort of inter-island transportation is definitely one beast, because it's relatively short haul, so to speak. And there are some companies we've heard from, you know, last year and other years, coming with some interesting solutions for that. But as far as the international and domestic long, long-haul travel, there's clearly, I think, no real obvious solutions there. But is it, is it worth having those discussions in sort of the same context with the same group of folks in the same working group? Or is it worth breaking out? Is it different enough anyway to justify by doing something differently? Or should we just sort of lump it all together? Because this technology is not fully developed yet.
I would just say that the technologies that would address inter-island versus international are significantly different or different enough. Inter-island travel can be addressed through electric aviation and/or through maritime, whereas the international would be currently addressed more through sustainable aviation fuels and/or in the research and development phase, hydrogen.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. And then just noting, just noting the testimony from the Climate Commission, also looking just as far as ground transportation, looking at vehicle miles traveled and trying to, I guess, get some sort of handle on a metric to reduce overall emissions over time and what have you. Is that something, as far as you guys, are you guys working on that sort of thing?
Yes, we're currently, we had a position funded in collaboration with the Climate Commission through the, through a grant for two years to start looking into vehicle miles traveled and other means by which they decrease the energy intensity of mobility.
Okay. Okay, and you guys are working with DOT on that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. All right, that's all my questions. Are there any further, any further questions on this one? If not, all right, let's move on to the next measure. Thank you, everyone. Up next is SB 2542 relating to transportation network companies, which establishes requirements and permitting procedures for transportation network companies operating in the state. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our submitted written testimony in support. We just request that permit please go to the Highway Special Fund to support our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is City and County of Honolulu Department of Transportation Services with comments. Hawaii Insurers Council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the committee. Allison Uwioka for Hawaii Insurers Council. We're commenting just on a couple of sections in this bill as they pertain to the insurance provisions that are already existing in Section 431-10C-701. And the first is that transportation network company is already in the insurance code. So instead of defining it again in this statute, we just would like to make a reference to it as it is done in the bill for pre-arranged ride and transportation network company driver. And our second comment is, we strongly support the passage of the insurance section of the bill to make it permanent. And there is another bill on this agenda as well to do that solely on its own. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Uber. Good afternoon. Oh, you're muted, Mr. Toyfuku.
Key person is right on. I didn't see that. I'll start over. Mr. Chairman and members, I'm Bach Toyfuku, testifying on behalf of Uber Technologies. And I think most of the committee has heard similar testimony last session as well. I just want to point out a couple of things. We feel the uniform regulation throughout the state will lend some stability to Uber and the other TNCs. It'll afford possible expansion if Uber decides to, for example, go into Uber Pool or even to help the Handy Van, as we had had talked several years ago. And I think you all know that there's, gives the workers, Uber drivers, flexible work opportunities and schedule. And lastly, I never mentioned it before, but there are hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees that go to the airport. And I think that's a very positive thing for the state in that sense. And lastly, I do have in my testimony suggested language similar to what Allison Uwioka is saying at Hawaii Insurers Council, to make it less confusing and more clear, to refer to the current law with regard to the definition. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Up next on this measure is Lyft.
Hello, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the committee. My name is Sam Cho, and I'm a public policy manager for Lyft, responsible for our policy in Hawaii. Lyft would like to express our support for both Senate Bill 2542 and actually 2275 as well, which creates a statewide regulatory framework and insurance framework, respectively, for rideshare companies. This will allow Lyft to expand throughout the state and permanently remove the sunset provisions from the TNC insurance statute. In Oahu, Lyft has been operating since 2014. And in the, on the Big Island, Maui and Kauai, since March of 2017. And Lyft's available enhances trans, availability enhances transportation office, options for, for locals and tourists alike, as we operate at airports and harbors across the four islands. And as of this year, 46 states across the United States have passed statewide rideshare legislation, just like SB 2542, that regulates transport network companies through a uniform framework. Vermont and Louisiana were the 45th and 46th states, respectively, to pass such legislation. And we are very hopeful that with the support of 2542, Hawaii can become the 47th state to pass comprehensive TNC legislation. Similarly, Senate Bill 2275 would take the current insurance provisions and make them permanent across the state. And so we believe that statewide legislation is a path towards providing consumers, drivers, and visitors a consistent experience with Lyft across the islands. We strongly support these, and we strongly urge you to pass both SB 2542 and SB 2275. And I'm also available and willing to take any questions that members might have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next is Charlie's Taxi in opposition. You know, with this Hawaii Transportation Association in opposition, and Roberts Hawaii in opposition. And that's all the testimony we have on 2542. Are there any questions? If not, I'll just note that the next measure is substantially similar to this one. So with that, why don't we head on to the next measure, which is SB 2275, again relating to transportation network companies, which makes permanent motor vehicle insurance requirements for TNCs. Testifying first on 2275 is the Department of Transportation.
Here, we stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Insurers Council.
Yes, Chair, we stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uber.
Mr. Chairman and members, we strongly support this bill and would like to see the insurance made permanent. Thank you.
Sure. And Lyft.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to echo those sentiments. All this bill does is get rid of the sunset provision that would make this expire and make it permanent across the state. We highly encourage you to support. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all the testimony we have on 2275. Any questions on this one? If not, Mr. Toyfuku, in your testimony, you had noted, one, it looks like a definition change. Just clarifying the definition of TNC, is that right?
Yes. You know, I think that it's slightly different, the definition of transportation network company in the bill and in the law. And after I discussed it with Allison at HIC, I think it's the, probably the easier and would have a better way to create that definition, referring back to 431-10C. And so it'll avoid confusion, actually.
Okay, and I guess for for Lyft, Mr. Cho, similarly, does that definition work for you as well? Presumably?
Yeah, generally, our position has been to be consistent in definitions, so as not to create any confusion. So I do also support a uniform definition within the state.
Okay, okay, that's all the questions I have. Any further questions on this measure? If not, all right, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure, SB. Thank you. SB 2444 relating to peer-to-peer car sharing insurance requirements. This establishes peer-to-peer car sharing insurance requirements. Testifying first on 2444 is the Department of Transportation.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Next is the DCCA. Insurance to be
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the committee. I'm Colin Hayashida, Insurance Commissioner for the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments on the bill. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Up next is the Hawaii Insurers Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We strongly support this bill. This provides a framework for insurance for peer-to-peer, similar to the standalone bill for transportation network companies. And we are currently working with some of the stakeholders, including the regulator and some of the others in terms of the exact language in the bill. I think we're trying to refine what's best. But what we did when we, before we asked for this bill to be introduced is we took House Bill 333, Senate Draft 2, as it died in conference, and tried to tighten it up the best that we could pertaining to Hawaii's laws. And so that's the result of that. But we're certainly willing to work with the other stakeholders to get something that has more broad agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Hawaii Association for Justice.
Aloha, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the committee. My name is Evan Oy, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice, or HAJ. We appreciate the intent of this measure to create requirements for peer-to-peer car sharing in Hawaii. However, HAJ opposes the current language of the bill and has three following main concerns. First, there's insufficient amount of required of minimum coverage for peer-to-peer car sharing companies. As a language only currently requires a minimum of 20,000 for liability and 10,000 in property damage. To address this, we recommend increasing the minimum to 1 million to be consistent with the required insurance coverage, similar to transportation network companies. Second, the language in Section 3B is overly broad in its use of "for any business use" on page eight, line 14. This may lead to unintended gaps in coverage and include business uses that should not be exempt. In order to address this, we recommend deleting the language on that page. Lastly, there's a gap in insurance coverage when there's any delay in returning the shared car. The definition of car sharing termination time has a loophole, as it states that the insurance terminates upon the expiration of the agreed-upon period of time, while personals, while owners' personal auto insurance excludes rideshare. For example, a gap in coverage occurs if a car is due back at 4:30, but there's an accident on H1, and it delays the return of the car until 6:00. The period between 4:30 and 6:00 PM would be uninsured. To address this concern, we just recommend deleting the word "earliest" on page two, line 20, and replacing it with "latest." Thank you so much for consideration of our comments. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. We'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Testifying next is the American Property Casualty Insurance Association. Good afternoon.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Akavab on behalf of the American Property Casualty Insurance Association. At this time, we'll just stand on our written testimony in full support of the measure and happy to be available for any questions, should there be any. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Turo.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the committee. Tammy Bulley on behalf of Turo.
We stand on the comments provided in our written testimony and I am also happy to answer any questions should there be any. Thank you.
Thank you. GEICO. In support. And Independent Car Rental Association. With comments. And Avail Car Sharing. In opposition. And that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, I've got just a couple. First, I miss the old days where you can call multiple people up at the same time. Okay. Let's start with Hawaii Association for Justice. Good afternoon. So in your testimony, other than some of the technical stuff, which I think you spoke to, the insurance thresholds, which were, I think, the crux of, I think, some of the conversation in a similar measure last year, is what you're focused on, the $20,000 threshold. Is that right?
Correct. So the way that we read the measure is that it only requires the $20,000 currently. We would respectfully recommend an increase.
So just to be clear, this is just not, this is $20,000 for liability should you injure somebody else or get in an accident with somebody else?
Correct.
Than to them?
Yeah, correct. And then there's also $10,000 for property damage as well.
So if I'm hit by a car, there's only $20,000 of their insurance that would cover my medical bills, is what you're saying, potentially?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then to follow up with the Insurance Commissioner? If you're still with us? Thanks, good afternoon. And just noting your testimony, you had raised some concerns over, I think probably just the question that was raised in terms of the levels of coverage for those who would be otherwise not of their own fault impacted by something like this. Is that sort of where you're focused?
Yeah. I mean, we just want to double-check the language to make sure that all those protections are there. We are supportive and working with the insurance industry in moving forward with a workable bill. And so, we just want to continue these discussions and just double-check to make sure that nothing is being left behind in terms of applicable coverage.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, Turo, if you're with us still.
Yes Chair.
Hi, good afternoon. So similarly to, I think, some of the discussion that overlaps with last year. So on the $20,000 threshold, is is that something you guys are actually pushing for here? Or is it sort of flexible for you?
Actually, just to clarify, we offered comments today because we are looking at this bill for the first time, Senator Lee. The, we were happy to look over what HAJ suggested in their testimony. But as noted, because this language is new for us, we are more familiar with the language that actually was in the bill SB 3271, actually your bill, which was discussed last year. But with regard to what is being discussed here, we are happy to discuss with the Hawaii Insurance Council as well as any other stakeholders on what this covers. But we are in the midst of analyzing that as, this is not, this is not, we do not have a position at this moment because we are reviewing that, but happy to look that over. I should clarify however though, that if there's reference to coverage that is the same as the TNCs, that is something that we did talk about last year. And that is something that as a peer-to-peer platform, we do have a different model altogether. So happy to follow up further, Senator. But with regard to this bill, we are still currently analyzing and look forward to further discussion.
Sure, understand. On that, should those levels change then going forward? So where we left off last year, I think on this, pretty much the exact same issue. For Turo, for other states, I think we looked at California in particular toward the end of the conversation as the bills moved through committee last year. Currently, is it still the case that Turo is required to provide $750,000 in coverage for those residents?
As the platform, as a platform, we allow, we offer up to $750,000 coverage for the host. This is the person that is listing their car on the platform. With regard to the guest, they have a number of options with regard to protection packages. At the time of the booking, they are then able to choose the appropriate protection package that they would like to choose. And that's spelled out when they book the car, at the prices set, when they book the car. That is something that is available to the guest to choose. If they choose a declined coverage, Senator, however, there is always coverage of the minimum state requirement within that state. So never is there a time where there is no liability coverage for the guest. They are always covered at the state minimum.
Sure. So what would, for the person who's crossing the street and is hit by somebody, is there a minimum coverage in that situation that applies in that case?
You know, Senator, I think, I think every circumstances can be unique and different to whatever that may be. And so I am not an insurance expert. I am happy to follow up with you directly on whatever particular circumstances there may be and bring in the appropriate folks to answer that insurance question. But I, I'm afraid I do not want to give you incorrect information here tonight.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? If not, all right, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure. Up next is SB 1357 relating to traffic violations, which prohibits the display of materials that distract, obstruct, or view of, or affects the safety of other drivers such as towels, sheets, cloths, and such things. And testifying first on 1357 this afternoon is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you Chair. We stand on our testimony in support. You know, we're more distracted than ever. So driving safely should always be our top concern by eliminating these unnecessary distractions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Department of Transportation Services at the City and County of Honolulu. With comments. Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Acting Lieutenant Steven Chung with the Honolulu Police Department's Traffic Division. We would like to stand by our written testimony in support of Senate Bill 1357. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Livable Honolulu in support. We have a testimony from a number of individuals. A couple in support, some in opposition. But we do have in-person testimony from a few. So I'm going to run through those names. Up first is Trun James.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, great. I hope everybody's doing well. I would say please terminate SB 157. It's treacherous. The right to expression and free speech cannot be marginalized. We understand that democracy is a bit messy, but we must protect free speech. And civic participation is already marginalized at the state Capitol. The state Capitol is closed despite being one of the most ventilated buildings in Oahu. And the public cannot even bring signs into the Capitol meeting areas. Flex, you are saying that flex are a distraction, but let me tell you that there are many other countless distractions. Loose dogs, drunk driving, driving in opposite directions, tourist trolleys, huge vehicles blocking our planes, view planes, and hanging of even banners on the road along the roads. And may I say that the most distracting is the potholes. We are forced to keep our eyes down on the road to avoid the pothole, which are everywhere. Our tires blow up, cars try to miss the pothole. That is the most dangerous and most distracting. And hundreds and millions of dollars are spent to fix our road, but it has become more and more dangerous. We would like the Senate to focus on this huge, biggest distraction. Require warranty on road work and so forth. It is ridiculous that every time it rains, more potholes grow. So there's no reason why the state cannot expect basic workmanship for the hundreds of millions of dollars that are spent. So please, democracy is messy, but we cannot just be so myopic and go after those people who are trying to fly a few flags. So please terminate SB 1357. It is treacherous for a free and open democratic society and focus on the potholes. That's the most distracting of it all. Mahalo and have a good day, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, up next is T. Alana. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Senator Lee and Inouye. So I am in strong opposition. And this petty bill is just another form of genocide of Kanaka Maoli, another way to try and strip us from our identity. First, our lands were stolen by businessmen that the former US President Cleveland said were insurgents. Then later, former US President Clinton apologized for the United States' participation in the overthrow. Within the apology states that reparations and the transfer of government were to occur. Yet here we are, still under the belligerent and illegal occupation of the Kingdom of Hawaii. Second, our language in hula was made illegal. It was pretty much illegal to be Kanaka Maoli on the lands our kipuna discovered. Third, this puppet government continues to harass and imprison Kanaka Maoli for protecting theaina and the vay. I can go on and on at the injustices we Kanaka Maoli have and continue to go through daily in our own country. So you can write all the laws you want, but they still do not apply to the Kingdom of Hawaii. Your ignorance to the existence of the Kingdom of Hawaii, according to the International Court of Arbitration, will be a war crime that you all will have to answer to. Maybe concentrate more on stopping the flushing of six million gallons of filtered contaminated water, which is still contaminated and being dumped into the environment. Flags flying versus polluting native plants, native and endangered animals, pets and people on Oahu. Flags shouldn't even be a bill to be passed. In conclusion, flying our hi Hawaii shows our love and pride of our country. It is a part of our identity as Kanaka Maoli. Just like fireworks, make this petty bill legal and more hi Hawaii will present itself. Last I checked, there has not been any accidents from someone flying a flag. But there are hundreds of people being poisoned by jet fuel. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Kapua Lahaina Munizpa in opposition and Kapua Maderos in opposition.
Present Chair.
Oh. Okay, go ahead, please.
Not present.
Oh, not present, sorry. Okay. Is there anyone else with us from the public wishing to testify in this measure? Who I had missed? If not, all right, thank you, everybody. Are there any questions? If not, I've got one for HPD. If you're with us.
Hi, I'm here, Senator.
Hi, thanks. I think I understand some of the, just reading through the testimony and hearing from some of the testifiers, some of the concerns over First Amendment rights and certainly potholes and such. But when it comes to safety, which was part of the discussion too, I think the intent here was not to limit anyone's First Amendment rights, but are there reasonable restrictions to ensure that someone doesn't have like a bed sheet, you know, hanging out the back of their car that flies and blocks the windshield of someone behind them? And what could that potentially look like?
Well, evidently, the display of any material is basically distracting the drivers. It could obstruct that own driver's view and it could also distract or obstruct other drivers' views. Basically, sorry, you had another question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so if, for example, the law restricted those kinds of displays or what have you to certain sizes so that it's not a great threat to safety should something come loose on a car and fly into another car or just block the view of somebody else who's driving behind? Is that something reasonably that could be enforced?
I believe it could be. The main concern is just the safety of obviously all the motorists involved on the roadway. And as long as the vehicles, as for instance, now if you have objects that are protruding out from your bedway, as long as you have a red flag and it's red and it's on the end of, for instance, if it's a piece of wood, that would signify the, you know, the object that's sticking out past the bed. I believe we would be able to enforce this.
Okay. And let me ask, I guess, what would be, or are you aware of a reasonable size that would ensure safety for the public while still allowing someone to exercise their First Amendment rights?
Honestly, I would have to look into it more and I would have to get back to you.
Okay. Yeah. If we can check with the Attorney Generals, I think you can follow up on some of these other legal questions. And real quick for Department of Transportation, if you're still with us.
Yes, Chair.
Just following up on that, just same thing. I mean, obviously, safety on the highway is everybody's top priority. Would the department support some sort of, if we can come up with some sort of compromise here where there's like a reasonable allowance for such flags and so forth, but without being too large or too dangerous for other motorists? Is that something the department could consider?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say one thing, you know, that, you know, to reaffirm, you know, one critical fact. DOT, our focus isn't on inhibiting people's rights or freedoms. I mean, it's basically the safety of the highways for everyone who uses it.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions on this measure? If not, all right, let's move on to the next one. Thank you, everybody. Up next is SB 2268 relating to infrastructure, which requires the PUC, or excuse me, requires public utilities to consider disruption to transportation as a criterion for future planning and maintenance. And testifying first on 2268 is Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon Chair. We stand on our testimony in support of the intent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Up next is Hawaii Gas. With comments. And that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, all right, let's move on to SB 3148 relating to harbors. This repeals certain statutes for the purpose of deleting obsolete or unnecessary provisions. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon Chair. We stand on our testimony in strong support. Piwalo Harbor is no longer under our purview and we no longer have a fireball. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all the testimony we have. Are there any questions? All right, if not, I'll just note, so that's the end of our 3:00 PM agenda for everyone. We do have a decision-making agenda for the bills carried over from our prior hearing two days ago. So what we'll do is we'll go into recess and we'll return for decision-making on both agendas. So recess. IT, can you take us into the breakout room? Okay, we're back from recess. This is the Transportation Committee. We're convening, reconvening for decision-making on our 3:00 PM agenda. I'll note that we have two agendas to vote on. The first is today's agenda that we just, on the bills we just heard. And then after that, we'll go into our second agenda for bills that were carryovers from two days ago. So up first on today's agenda is SB 3311 relating to transportation, which establishes the ground transportation and inner island transportation working groups. three three one one relating to transportation, which establishes the ground transportation and inner island transportation working groups and goals. And we'd like to move this forward, making some amendments. So the first thing we'd like to do is adopt the State Energy Office amendments, which are basically technical amendments in their in their testimony. We want to clean up the references to some of the existing goals in statute and make those all clear. Secondly, we want to adopt the Hawaii Auto Dealers Association recommendations, which removes the twenty forty five date from that section, and we'll just replace it with references to our existing state goals and whatnot. And then fourth, or excuse me, third, we'll just specify more clearly that the agencies can collaborate, leading the working groups, hopefully working together, taking steps to implement our zero emissions charging infrastructure incentives along with everything else. And then finally, we'll fix the distinction between inner island, domestic, international travel, and just make clear that it's all travel. For some reason, in drafting, we had left out domestic, which was inadvertent. So that should cover all the amendments. Are there any questions or comments on that? If not, all right, Vice Chair. Recommendation to pass with amendments.
Chair's recommendation on SB thirty three eleven to pass with amendments. Chair Lee goes eye, Vice Chair goes eye, Senator Decoit.
I.
Okay, Senator Shima Bukuru.
I.
Senator Favela. Excused. Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Moving on to SB two five four two relating to transportation network companies. This is the first of two transportation network company bills. So what we'll do is, since we have two of them, we're going to use one as vehicle and no need to have two. So we'll defer this measure and instead move forward the next measure, which is SB two two seven five, also relating to transportation network companies, but we'll do it with a few amendments. So we'll include the regulation section from the prior bill, SB two five four two, which we discussed. And secondly, adopt the amendment suggesting a clarification of the definition of transportation network companies set forth in HRS four thirty one dash ten C dash seven oh one. And finally, we'll add on a defective date. So we'll have a chance to take a crack at this because it is a little bit of a complicated issue, but it has been around for some years, so we hope that the discussion can continue in the Consumer Protection Committee. So any questions or comments? Yes.
Chair, just for clarification, I go back to SB three three one one. The motion of the measure has been adopted.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so voting on SB two two seven five, recommendation is to pass with amendments.
Okay. Chair's recommendation on SB two two seven five is to pass with amendments. I'm not sure this is a Zoom thing, so I'm going to call by name. I'm not sure if Senator Favela will return, Mr. Chair. So Chair Lee.
I.
Vice Chair goes eye, Senator Decoit.
I.
And Senator Shima Bukuru.
I.
Senator Favela is excused. Motion is, the SB twenty two seventy five is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB two four 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 relating to peer-to-peer car sharing insurance requirements. We'd like to move this forward as well, making some amendments. So what we'd like to do is, first of all, address the gap coverage that some of the testifiers raised. So page two, line twenty, that's just switching the words earliest to latest to ensure that there's coverage throughout. Secondly, page eight, line thirteen and fourteen, we'll just narrow the broad application to businesses and thirdly, we'll add in a defective date. This is one of those issues that also is technical in nature. We'll just note, though, for the, this goes on to the CPN Committee next. So we'll just note the concern in the committee report, the concerns from the Insurance Commissioner and some of the other insurance companies about whether there's adequate levels of coverage for folks. But this is the jurisdiction of the Consumer Protection Committee, so we'll leave it up to them to decide what to do next. And that's it for this. Any questions? On this one, if not, recommendation to move past with amendments, Vice Chair.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on SB two four 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 is to pass with amendments. With all four members present, anyone voting with reservations, any voting nay. With the excuse of Senator Favela, motion is adopted. The bill is adopted, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to SB thirteen fifty seven relating to traffic violations, this prohibits displays of sheets and towels and cloths and things on vehicles operating on the highway. I'll note that, you know, with the support of law enforcement, obviously, safety is a priority. Is not the intent of this measure to limit anyone's First Amendment rights. So do you think there's a medium here where we can get folks together and figure out what reasonable limits can be placed because we don't want folks driving down the highway with bed sheets and whatnot in an unsafe manner, letting those fly off and block the vision of other people behind them? So what we're going to do is defer this till Tuesday, two eight, till our three oh five agenda. And we'll coordinate with some of our agencies and see if we can come up with compromised language that achieves the goals for everybody. So with that, we'll move on to SB two two six eight relating to infrastructure. This requires public utilities to consider disruption to transportation as a criterion in planning future maintenance. There wasn't a ton of testimony in this, so this goes on to the CPN Committee. We'll move it on, just adding a defective date, and we'll see if other folks are able to weigh in. So recommendations to pass with a defective date with amendments.
Chair's recommendation on SB two two six eight is to pass with amendments. With four members present, anyone voting with reservations, any voting nay. With the absence of Senator Favela, the bill SB two two six eight is adopted, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Moving on to SB three one four eight relating to harbors, this is just a housekeeping bill repealing obsolete language. Recommendations to move on as is.
Chair's recommendation on SB three one four eight is to pass unamended with four members present and the absence of Senator Favela, anyone?
Senator Favela just popped in.
Okay, all right, then I will do a a voice count, a voice vote. Senator Lee, Chair Lee.
I.
Okay, Vice Chair goes eye, Senator Decoit.
I.
Senator Shima Bukuru.
I.
Senator Favela.
I.
Okay, motion is adopted on Senate Bill three one four eight, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So that's the end of our first agenda. So moving into our decision-making agenda for the carryover bills from the other day. Up first is SB two eight two five, excuse me, relating to harbors, which has the Department of Transportation studying the potential for Kalailoa Harbor to support offloading of cargo and livestock. And it makes an appropriation. So want to move this forward, making some amendments. So the first thing, we'll just know there's already a blank appropriation, which we'll leave blank. But we'll add in for DOT an extra year for reporting back to the legislature. Also, in doing this study, we'll suggest that DOT shall consult with relevant stakeholders, which is going to include harbor users and and others, and we'll we'll just name them in the bill. And then we'll also note in the, oh, no, that's it. Yeah, that's it. So any questions or comments on this one? If not, Vice Chair.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on SB twenty eight twenty five is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
I.
The Vice Chair goes eye, Senator Decoit.
I.
Senator Shima Bukuru.
I.
Senator Favela.
I.
Okay, motion is adopted on SB twenty eight twenty five.
Thank you. Moving on to SB three one six two relating to audible vehicle reverse warning systems. This is requiring the replacement of backup beepers. So based on the discussion and some of the questions, we'd like to pass this on, but making amendments. So what we want to do is basically narrow the the bill, and so what we'll do is have it apply only to number one, public vehicles, so state and county vehicles. And two, we'll make it prospective so that it applies to new vehicles purchased going forward from January one, twenty twenty five on. So that way, we address the issues of some of the industry folks who testified and also make sure that there's no issues with voided warranties or anything for the vehicles that were already purchased by the state. And then lastly, we'll just add on a defective date to the bill. So any questions or comments on that?
Okay, Mr. Chair, what bill were you on?
This is SB three one six two.
Is to pass with amendments?
Yes.
Chair's recommendation on SB three one six two is to pass with amendments. With all five members present, anyone voting with reservations, any nays. Motion is adopted, Mr. Chair, on SB three one six two.
Thank you. Moving on to SB two seven two zero relating to energy, this is the electric vehicle charging station program that gives the PUC a little more flexibility. We're working with the stakeholders on this one, trying to come up with some language right now. So what we'll do is kick this one also to Tuesday, the eighth, our next hearing on our three oh five PM agenda. So we'll defer that for now. And then the next measure, SB three one five eight relating to transportation. This is subsidies encouraging the purchase and use of electric motor vehicles and electric bicycles. Similarly, we're working with our state agencies on a fix for this, so we'll defer this one also to Tuesday, the eighth, on our three oh five PM agenda. And then SB three three one three relating to transportation, this is the mileage based road user fee. Been a lot of great input on this one, so we are working with DOT and our other stakeholders on language for this as well, so this will go to Tuesday, the eighth, at our three oh five PM agenda. So we'll defer that for now. Finally, SB three seven seven relating to traffic violations, this increases fines for traffic violations. We'd like to move this forward, making some amendments. So we had input from the public defender. It's not the intent, I think, of anybody here to increase fines to the point that folks who can't afford to pay it are stuck in a debtor's prison or anything like that. So what we'd like to do is try something out here. So instead of raising fines, what we'll do is for the third moving violation, so for repeat offenders who just aren't paying attention, we'll add in community service. So that way, no matter how much money you got, you're you're going to have some penalty that helps to keep you in check. And then we'll add in a defective date as well. I'll note this goes on to the Judiciary Committee, so hopefully the public defender and other folks can weigh in again on these changes, and we'll see where it goes. So any questions or comments on that one? All right, if not, Vice Chair.
This is to pass with amendments is your recommendation?
Yes.
Chair's recommendation on SB three seven seven is to pass with amendments. With five members present, any voting with reservations, any nays. Motion is adopted, Mr. Chair, on SB three seven seven.
Thank you. And then finally, last bill on our agenda today, SB two one zero five relating to the renewal of drivers licenses. This allows for online renewals. What we'd like to do is move this forward, making some amendments. We had a chance to chat with Department of Transportation and the city and county. I just want to, for the public's purposes, apologize. The city and county was here to testify in this measure, but because of technical issues, we're unable to do so. So we did have a conversation to iron out some of the issues, and the issue at the time was whether or not people could apply online but ensure that their vision is still good and they're going to be safe drivers. So we came up with a fix thanks to that collaboration. So what we'll do is we'll amend the bill also to include that documentation of a physical exam that's submitted shall be no more than three months old. In other words, within three months prior to the renewal date of the license. And that should satisfy everybody's concerns because, as it turns out, it's actually safer to do that than even submit banking information and other things. So lastly, we'll add in a defective date to make sure that we can come back and make sure this is done right. So if there's no questions or comments, all right, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB two one oh five is to pass with amendments. With five members present, any voting, any votes with eyes, any noes. Mr. Chair, SB twenty one oh five is adopted.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda. Mahalo, everybody. Have a great weekend.